Council meeting to order. Twinsburg Government Center Council Chambers. It's 8:15 PM. Shannon, please call the roll.
Mrs. Stauffer?
Here.
Mr. Scafidi?
Here.
Mr. Yates?
Here.
Mr. Roden?
Here.
Mr. Saraci?
Here.
Mr. Fury?
Here.
Mr. McDermott?
Here.
Okay, this time we'll have the invocation and pledge allegiance led by Mr. Roden.
Father, we seek your guidance for the business that is before us and planning for the future of the city of Twinsburg give us vision. Guide us to make decisions that are not self-serving but for the betterment of our community so we can continue to move in a positive direction. Amen.
(inaudible)
At this time I'll need approval of the minutes from September 9th, 2014. Any changes or anything done? Okay, with nothing the minute stands as written. Next we have awards and presentations and actually, I had Nick speaking then. Did we have anything else? Mr.?
Sal, did you want to speak on Nick's behalf?
Thank you. Valerie Deros with Summit County Emergency Management and we are just here to request support for the public sales tax that will be issue 12 that will be on the ballot in November. This is a 25% additional sales tax that is critical to public safety. This tax is to upgrade our present emergency radio system. The platform we have now will be obsolete in a few years and we need funding for that. Also to assist us with upgrading the technology for 911. Next gen is on the horizon. It's an IP base so we will have to be able to have new infrastructure such as fiber optics to upgrade the system and this will provide connectivity from Columbus to Summit County and then out to the public safety communications centers. This tax sunsets in 10 years. The sales tax, the county executive and other elected officials felt that it was the best way because we can bring income in from the outside in communities. We'll still have a very low tax base. And then Lieutenant Doug Smith was going to address the needs for the sheriff's office. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, part of 92 and a half percent of the sales tax is going to be to the sheriff's office, public safety, the upgrade to P-25, 800 megahertz and next generation 911. So 92 and a half percent of the tax will be utilized for that. The other 7.5% will be utilized for the county for different other infrastructure items. With the jail, we're down our staffing after a federal Department of Justice study. Fifty deputy sheriffs right now. We've never been this low. Our programs that we provided, the jail, that really buys into the restorative justice that's the mission of the Ohio Department of Rehabilitation is restorative justice on the inmates, we can't accomplish that. We don't have our GD programs anymore, the AA programs counseling, it's very difficult for clergy to get in the jail, hold chapel services, both gyms in the jail are shut down. So there's a lot of issues when it comes to staffing is just safety and security, not only for the deputy sheriffs who get assaulted there daily or fight with people daily because we don't get, you know, great customers coming into our establishment there. So there's a lot of issues, you know, with that. Since 2008, our budget's been cut $8 million. Summit County's budget's been cut $100 million through local funding and everything else, which you guys experience the same or similar cuts that we have and it's very difficult. When the sheriff approached, county executive about the sales tax, it was not to put a specific levy on that just burdens the citizens of Summit County. What they asked for is a sales tax because it's going to get everyone coming into this county. If you just look on the west side of Akron, you know, Fair Lawn, Montrose, that area, big shopping district, Medina, Cogga County coming down to use it. We have, you know, the Bridgestone Golf Tournament every year, the All-American Soapbox Derby. We had the gay games this year, Twins Days every year. People are coming from other parts of the country to Summit County, Ohio. So a lot of that sales tax, probably I'm guessing right in the neighborhood of 25% I believe it is, is money that's going to be brought into Summit County on the sales tax from other parts of the country in the world. So this tax, which expires after 10 years, there'll also be an escrow account put away for jail operations that will fund portions of that for 10 years after that. So there'll be accounts so that money's going to be directed specifically to that, not just into the general fund pot so everyone else dips in. The biggest budget item for the county of Summit is public safety from the clerk of courts, the courthouse, prosecutor's office, sheriff's office, EMA, it's public safety. It's the largest part of that budget and we need help. We believe the sales tax was the fairest way to do it for the citizens other than a levy and that's why we came and we're asking for your support with it. Once again, sorry I said I was going to go but I stayed. We're sneaky that way. But if there's any questions, please ask them, you know, ask the hard questions, you know, I'll answer to the best of my ability. We're very transparent and we invite you guys to come down and take a tour of that facility. Twinsburg Police Department sends us customers, you know, weekly so, you know, come down and see it. You know, it's your jail, we're willing to give you a tour from the other side of the windows. So.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, that's our last presentation. Is there audience participation?
There is. Lauren Sensack?
Before we begin, Mr. Scafidi.
Yeah, just to go over our rules, no more than three persons will speak on one specific issue. If there are other issues listed on the sheet, persons will speak on an issue that they state on the sheet. Persons granted the floor shall address their remarks to the president of council and not engage any council members or other officers to a debate. Ty raids will not be permitted nor will profane, derogatory, contemptuous, slanderous, harassing or mean spirited or false comments or remarks. Presiding office shall limit to five minutes the time permitted to speak to address council. No person shall address council more than once at each meeting. Members of council may respond during audience participation only by leave of the president of council and the audience participation will not exceed one half hour.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Scafidi.
Lauren Sensack, 2704 Arbor Glen Drive, apartment 105 here in Twinsburg. I want the public to be aware of Sally Gaddash, defender of the people's right to vote, wins in court again. On September 16th, 2014, Judge Jones in Summit County Complies Court ordered the following. Upon review and consideration of the Twinsburg Charter and ordinances, this court finds that height regulations fall within Chapter 114101. A change in the height regulations without requiring a vote by the electorate is a violation of Charter Section 7801, which reserves to the voters of Twinsburg the final say and legislative zoning power. The court finds that plaintiff is entitled to a judgment as a matter of law. Judgment is rendered in favor of the plaintiff, which was Sally Gaddash. The electorate of Twinsburg must be given the opportunity to vote on changes to height regulations. Judge Jones indicated, quote, "There is no dispute that the Charter of Twinsburg mandates voter approval of zoning changes pursuant to Section Charter, Charter Section 7801." It's obvious that the court and Sally Gaddash understand clearly what our law director and economic development director along with some members of council do not, that the citizens of Twinsburg have reserved unto themselves the right to vote on zoning district regulations in Charter Section 7801. For more than a decade Sally Gaddash and her attorney Warren Mendenhall have repeatedly been victorious in the courts because of their understanding and espoused knowledge of Charter Section 7801, which mandates ultimately a vote of the people for any changes to Title III district regulations as guaranteed in the Charter Section 7801. Zoning regulations change issue seems simple and clear enough to the court. The question is why does our law director advise council they should deny voters the opportunity to vote on this zoning regulation? Sally Gaddash as a protector of the people's right to vote has been vilified, ignored and personally attacked, leading ultimately into the courts to defend the right of the voters to vote. City council has acted again in obvious, on obviously flawed advice and understanding of our zoning regulations by our law director and choose not to defend the citizens' right to vote. It appears the city council simply acted in what I would consider a common term nowadays of mindless compliance. Just did it. It's also painfully clear that our law director and not Sally Gaddash is confused and ignorant of exactly what sections in our zoning regulations mandate a vote of the people. Perhaps it's time to consider a new law director. Without a doubt, finger pointing will be the order of the day from City Hall after this court ruling. Don't be misled by those who say this is about heights of buildings. This issue is about the people's right to vote on our zoning regulations. The court has rightfully upheld Gaddash's claims under the law that orders 972012 unanimously approved by city council, signed by Mayor Prokop and council president Ted Yates as prepared by our law director, supported by our economic development director, does in fact and law require a vote of the people. Question remains as to why our city leaders on multiple occasions denied the people our constitutional protected right to vote on Title III district zoning regulations as guaranteed under 7801. When there is ambiguity in the law or any question, why not just let the people vote? Accountability demands that our city council call for a special investigation. I would use the planning commission and I'd use independent counsel to review all the minutes, all the records regarding this ordinance and the issues of how it was adopted and why it was put in place without a vote of the people. I could go on about this for a long time but I'm going to sum it up with just this. I would like everybody to understand one statement that John Witherspoon, a founding father of our nation and signer of our Declaration of Independence said, and I quote, "It's a progressive of God to do what he will with his own, but he often displays his justice himself by throwing into the furnace those who though they may not be visibly worse than others, may yet have more to answer for, as having been favored with its more distinguished privileges, both civil and sacred." I take this opportunity and encourage voters in this town to again defend our right to vote and vote no on issue 41, as I understand it is going to be from November 4th, and keep Twinsburg a unique community we all love. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, and any other?
If anybody has any comments.
Anybody have any comments? I did. Thank you. Any other audience participation?
Yes. Mark Collins?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, Mark.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay. I'm here to ask for reimbursement for damage to our car. I'm sure you guys have had many claims like this over the years but what happened to us I don't think is anything close to normal. I've lived in Twinsburg for over 20 years. I travel route 82 all the time. On the evening of December 22nd while traveling in the curb lane going no more than the speed limit, all of a sudden we have two flat tires, a bent rim and a car that has to be towed away. When we pulled into a McDonald's shortly after hitting what we hit, which we didn't know what it was, I was infuriated. I called the police department. I'm saying, I don't know who I'm supposed to call but I just hit something. I have two, my car's destroyed, it has two flat tires and I was just outraged, I mean, I was totally outraged. The officer came to McDonald's where I was stranded. He asked me to point out what I hit. So we walked back, or I walked back and he drove. When he saw what we hit, he immediately put flares down and a cone. What was there was not just a normal pothole or chuck hole or something, this was something that was a public hazard. It was beyond just something you should see on a city street, especially in the city that I live in. I mean, I'm embarrassed to say that something could be that bad in my city. The one picture you're looking at, I'm hoping that it shows a manhole and the top lip of the manhole is about an inch. It might not be very clear but I hope it is that what we hit was at least eight inches deep. Our car hit the bottom. I'm shocked that we didn't have more damage than we did but all it was was, it turned out that we needed a new rim and two tires. But the officer who responded was obviously concerned enough that he made sure that nobody else was going to hit this. And there's another picture that shows our car, there's another picture that shows something that just happened to be laying on the side of the road and there's a crack through whatever that decorative rim is that's laying there. So something messed up that car's wheel too, but I just happened to be the one that called with the most damage, I guess. But I don't think it's unreasonable on my part and my wife's part to ask the city for some kind of help with this. I've hit many, I drive a truck for a living, I have a CDL. I've hit many things on the roadway in my time of driving. I've never experienced hitting something like that, that, it was unavoidable and I'll just say that the city should have been on top of it way before I hit it. We were actually in a sense like a sitting duck. We were driving on our way to dinner and all of a sudden our whole evening was ruined. Does anyone have a question or anything?
No, I mean, I know I've had communications with you back and forth numerous times. I've been communicating with Dave, communicating, I believe there's been communications with Karen, communications with our insurance company. I wasn't aware that there was still not, I guess, a complete resolution of this.
Yeah, I started communicating, at least my first communications were way back right after it happened and I never had really one response, whether it was from the law director or anyone else on council. I mean, I tried to get this resolved and I realized that this is just going to be swept under the rug and I really feel like a victim. I mean, I live here, I pay taxes here, I'm proud of my city but this makes me embarrassed and it's uncalled for that, what happened and I just think the city should do what's right and reimburse us.
I think he needs to finish before we have dialogue. Point of order here.
Yeah.
Okay. You have another minute to go and then we can discuss if.
I understand.
Okay. So you've got another minute if you have anything further to say.
I don't really, I just wanted to know if you had any questions with me, if you wanted to know why we didn't do an insurance claim on our own because I have a CDL and I don't want to have an accident with the roadway and that's what that's considered if you do a claim as a commercial driver's license person like I am. I have no, I have no records, I have no accidents, I have no points, I have nothing. So the last thing I want to do is report something that makes it look like I'm a reckless driver.
I understand.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything?
Respond now or did you want to finish up?
No, you, oh, we want to respond now? Now would be great.
If I could, I'd just like to say that Mr. Collins has been diligent in this. I think the first, when this first came, was reported to the city, we checked with Mr. Campbell regarding when the city was first placed on notice or if we had noticed prior to Mr. Collins hitting this pothole. And I'll agree with him, I did have a conversation with the officer that responded and the officer, the picture that you see here is everything the officer describes. I mean, it was clear to me from my conversation with the officer that this was something that A, wasn't off to the side of the road, it was clearly in the lane of travel and clearly what Mr. Collins hit and clearly was deep enough to cause the damage to his vehicle. Now that being said, we checked with Chris Campbell prior to submitting this insurance company because Ms. House and I have been down this road before, we know insurance company's position's going to be when the city was placed on notice of this pothole and whether or not we were placed on notice prior to Mr. Collins encountering it. And in fact, according to our records, the service department had been out to this location within a week prior to this date and had repaired that exact same pothole which then, whether it was plowed back up, popped back up, the damage occurred. So we had received calls, we did repair it and I think based upon the fact that we responded, I think Mr. Campbell responded within 24 hours of the first call on this and repaired it and I think you can see some of the patch that was still there, obviously came out. Insurance company denied coverage on this claim, which then puts the city in a position and I think in the past we have discussed the possibility of having a moral claims division to discuss issues like this. As you know, we've encountered similar problems like the Collins have faced where our insurance company denies it and they deny it based upon the city having immunity, which then leaves it with a resident or anybody else that might come through that has damage, which is certainly no fault of their own, but the city doesn't have coverage because our insurance company relies upon our immunity provision. So again, it's something that I know from Karen's standpoint, she has a difficulty from the financial end of issuing a check or making a payment when we have our insurance company saying you have immunity on this subject. And that's why you'll see a lot of communities set up or establish moral claims departments so they have a board or some body other than council, other than the finance director that can speak and say, "We think that from a moral claim standpoint, something should be paid." And the city in the past has offered and paid deductibles and I don't, I won't have this conversation with the Collins here but I'll certainly more than willing to have it concerning what they're deductible, they're out of pocket. But if they didn't make a claim, then they're out of pocket, it's a full amount. Right, that's what I'm saying, it's the full amount.
Mr. Maestro, what was the full amount?
It was $22.82.37.
Twenty-two?
Twenty-two eighty-two thirty-seven.
Dollars, hundred, million?
$2,282.37 is my understanding. All right. Two rims and...
Is it reasonable to make a motion to, under the guise of a moral's claim, to pay that to the resident?
I think if...
I think we'll have Mr. Maestros have a discussion with the Collins.
What is the deductible, do we know?
Well, it's my understanding that Collins didn't make a claim because he didn't want this A, on his insurance and he didn't want to...
I see.
So there is no, I mean, the deductible's not of issue.
Yeah, right. I think some of the issues that's been battling is, you know, we've had in the past and I think I tried sharing a little bit is, you know, we just don't write checks for residents when these issues happen. We take a look at the situation and, you know, in this particular case, there could have been a claim filed but, you know, but there wasn't. So, you know, what level that's consistent with what we've done in the past do we do on this? And, you know, I guess I'd like to have that discussion.
That information, right.
Yeah.
You know, and see where we're at. I know we've had some discussions on it on a number of occasions. So it's just, you know, I guess that's where we stand with it.
Okay.
Yeah, and if I could just sum up, I mean, Mr. Yates has had a number of conversations on this and this is the dilemma that we get put in. We as a city are provided with information from insurance company denying the claim saying, because of immunity, but we have a individual or a couple who has, to no fault of their own incurred this damage. I mean, this isn't, clearly they were not at fault and I just want to make that clear and that's, you know, that's what puts the city in a tough bind because Karen is the finance director, still has to pass an audit of every year of why these checks were issued and you also have an insurance company saying, "You're not at fault, why are you paying?" So if we have some criteria and some guidelines, at least that gives us a little more direction when we encounter these situations.
Right. Okay.
So can you recommend those guidelines for that?
Sure, we had come up with something, we'd certainly, I mean, it doesn't mean that it can't apply to the Collins. I think we could apply retroactively to their claim. If council can, you know, we'll get you something if we could.
Okay. Sounds good. Okay, thank you. Is there any other audience participation?
Yes. Sally Gaddash?
Mr. Scafidi, if you would, I'm Sally Gaddash, 9250 Liberty Road, Twinsburg. Mr., without taking out of my five-minute time period, would you please repeat the rules of council regarding addressing you?
Sure. No more than three persons to speak on one specific issue if other issues are listed on the sign-in sheet. Persons will speak on the issue that they state on the sheet. Persons granted the floor shall address their remarks to the president of council and shall not engage council members or other officers of the city to debate. Ty raids are not permitted nor shall any person utter any profane, derogatory, contemptuous, slanderous, harassing, mean spirited, malicious or false comment or remarks.
That's enough. Thank you.
You ready to start now?
Fine. I'm ready to start, yes. Speaking of derogatory remarks addressed to you, let me repeat some that have been forwarded into the courts against me. Mrs. Gaddash fancies herself and takes great pride as a watchdog and a protector of the charter. She has taken extreme positions that 7801 should be construed to require any and all changes that must be placed on the ballot and voted by the electorate. Such an extreme position is without merit, completely void of logic. Twice again, extreme position without merit, completely void of logic. Those are just a couple that I've happened to come to my mind while you're talking. As you're aware, these comments have no business in the courts and certainly have not done you any favors. Rulings are against you or for you based on law and order, not derogatory remarks. Constant insults at meetings that I have been fighting about big box doors. Three times I went to council meetings, commission meetings, Mr. Saraci, you attended them. Never did I talk about big, I mentioned big box doors because it was in a report from Mr. Finch. Even in deposition, even in court, Mrs. Gaddash is worried about big box doors. Well, I wasn't then, but I am now. So let me, hopefully I can get through this in my five-minute time period. I'm here tonight to ask you to remove issue 41, an amendment to the charter, for several The proposed amendment that the city shall be divided and designated into zoning classifications and subclassifications. This ballot issue says nothing about dividing the city. It talks about changing classifications and subclassifications upon the approval of council and voting by the people. The ballot is misleading and the real issue at hand is really changing the official plan and the map of our city, which is not delegated to anyone except our planning commission. It is not delegated to the charter review commission or to the law director. The last ballot to amend 781 specifically talks upon, you might check this out, upon the report and recommendation of the planning commission. Why does this not amendment not say that? We know from the current ruling seven days ago that Charter 7801 already grants voters all authority to vote on all land use, zoning or rezoning land. So what's the purpose of totally bypassing the planning commission, which they did not know anything about because I talked to them two weeks ago and gave them all the information? Why has the planning commission been bypassed? I stood here so many times and said, "Why do you bypass our planning commission?" The most important, yes, Mr. Fury, they have been repeatedly bypassed and this time they were bypassed again. One of the most important issues in our city, our mapping and our planning and our zoning, which is mandated by state law, must be under the control and only the control of the planning commission. This is ordered by the Constitution to give fair treatment of land use. Our charter confirms this, says all such matters pertaining to zoning of land shall be referred to the planning commission for report and recommendation.
One minute, Mrs. Gaddash.
This was not. Zoning Code 1103 says that planning commission shall have all power to review and recommend council plans and maps for dividing the city into any portion into zones and districts. It does not provide for classifications and subclassifications, which is what this amendment does. Has anyone thought that your proposal includes the task of rewriting the entire zoning code? As written, our code provides for districts 400 times. How do you propose to override... How do you propose to override that by including classifications and subclassifications that aren't even defined in our code? Let's take a look back to the last time this code was proposed to be amended.
Your time is up.
Mr. Scafidi, Mr. Fury, and Mr. McDermott, you were on board. On November the fourth, two thousand, Mr. Finch submitted a UDC book to the people. It failed. This prompted the mayor's report and planning, mayor's zoning code on May the fifth, two thousand and three. This was followed by an April fourth, two thousand and five proposed blue book submitted by Mr. Finch. Finally, on December the fifth, the planning commission submitted a white book, and on January the twenty-sixth, it was voted by council.
Mrs. Gadasch.
Again, voters were denied the right to vote, and this prompted a federal lawsuit.
Mrs. Gadasch.
Not by voters, but by business owners.
Please, please respect the process.
If somebody, please allow me to finish my report.
Your time is up, Mrs. Gadasch.
When the city attempted to use the unvoted code as evidence in the federal court...
Shut the tape.
Judge Dowd informed Mr. Finch and Brous McDowell attorney that two thousand and six code was invalid, and therefore, the city lost a federal case. As public officials, you need to concern yourself with the briefs filed in, on your behalf too often, as I have stated. They are slurring, insulting. So, please, if you ask us to respect you, please respect the plaintiffs to file charges against you and win six times.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Shannon, is there any other people, any other audience participation?
There is none.
Okay, thank you. Any, any comments, anybody needs?
I have a question. Mr. Maestros, issue forty-one, was that something that came from the charter review commission?
Yes.
Okay. And second question, with this ruling that capped the building height at three stories in Twinsburg, where do we stand now that that's been ruled against?
Well, it didn't really cap it at stories. The, what happened was the court ruled that the height restriction, the city passed height restriction, I two, I one, I two districts, or industrial districts at forty-five feet. So, with the ruling saying that that is essentially void, we revert back to the prior code of eleven forty-nine oh nine, which had a thirty-five-foot height limit in the city with a provision, a variance provision to go in excess of thirty-five feet based upon whether or not there was enough side yard, rear yard setbacks. So, you could exceed thirty-five feet, but you had to have side, rear yard, front yard setbacks, side yard setbacks in order to accomplish that.
So, what would be the cap now?
Well, the old code or the old provision provided that the maximum building height in an I two, an I three industrial district would be set by the mayor and city council. Or, I'm sorry, the mayor and planning, the mayor and planning commission confirmed by city council. Reading that, the maximum building height in an I two, I three industrial district shall be recommended by the mayor and planning commission and confirmed by city council. So, there was no maximum, it was based upon the size of the lot and how high, how much setback the lot would have had.
So, at Cornerstone, hypothetically, what's the largest building you could have there?
Oh, I don't know. I mean, that, the hypothetical would call in too many variables, because I don't know how, I don't know what their setbacks would be, and...
All right, well, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Yes, Mr. Maestros?
Thank you, Mrs. Stoffer, if I could. I would like to point out, I think something was said regarding that issue forty-one has removed planning commission from the equation. The charter review commission did not remove planning commission. Okay, charter, the issue forty-one as presented states, okay, and this is with the charter commission language, states that "Any change of zoning classifications or subclassifications of any parcel or parcels of property in the city or in the uses permitted or prohibited any zoning classification or subclassification within the city must first be submitted to planning commission for consideration and report." The fact that it gets submitted to planning commission for consideration and report is the old seven A O language, it's the new proposed seven A O language, it hasn't been changed at all. Planning commission is still integral and has to make that report to council before council can make any consideration. And I'd just like to say that planning commission was involved in the height limitation to forty-five feet. That issue was presented to planning commission. It was also presented to charter review oversight commission. It was also presented to the building department. It was also presented to council, and we discussed it on a number of occasions, and had a number of eyes look at that. And the briefs on that case were submitted in September of two thousand and thirteen. So, I mean, with all due respect, it took Judge Jones a year reviewing that to make that decision. It wasn't, she didn't make that decision quickly or easily. You know, she, she took her time, made that decision, and took quite a bit of time to do it. So, you know, and I, if Mrs. Gadasch, I didn't attack Mrs. Gadasch in, in any wording in a brief, okay? I mean, if, if she is offended by, by anything I said, and my intent was not directed towards Mrs. Gadasch, okay, it was the state of Ohio, it's a taxpayer lawsuit filed against the city regarding an issue. So, at this point in time, you know, the, the prior language regarding eleven forty-nine oh nine is in effect, and that's with a thirty-five foot with the ability to go higher based upon the lot size. And that's where, that's where we'll stand until the city, until we make a decision what direction we're going to go with this.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Maestros, do you have something, Mr. Yates?
Yeah, just, just to kind of respond to Bill. The, the charter amendment, I mean, I sat in at pretty much all of the charter review commission meetings, there was a lot of discussion regarding that charter change. And I believe Ms. Gadasch came to a planning commission one night, was, had, a presentation was videoed, but then left immediately. And the charter, or the planning commission then did discuss some per comments, and none of them felt that it was appropriate that, I think her biggest, I guess, concern was that that proposed charter amendment didn't go in front of planning commission first. And none of them felt that they had a right or was entitled to have that proposed charter change come in front of them. So, they felt that, you know, this is a separate commission that was put into place to make these recommendations, that spent a lot of time and a lot of effort doing so, and I guess that was their, their position. So, just wanted to, to share that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we're going to move on to council communications and committee reports. Mr. Yates?
Back to me, all right. Parks and Rec Commission met on September tenth. There was, unfortunately, there was the, as Derek shared earlier, there was no recording of it. So, we don't really have any minutes from it, but some of the main topics that were discussed that, you know, he spoke of this evening was the repair of the, the netting in the fitness center. Reports were given by everyone. The outdoor pool did really well. I think the addition of Reminderville and Twinsburg Township was, was a welcomed addition. I believe the residents of those communities appreciated it, and it didn't interfere with any of our operations. So, it was successful here at the pool, the Rock the Park series again was another successful series. There's a, you know, pretty busy fall that's coming up with, with some of the programming that, that is going on. I know that some events coming up, you've got the Bear Ballet coming up that's at the school, a recent event that Parks and Rec contributed with was the Freedom Five K, was a great event. I think we had over two hundred runners and walkers for that event. So, it turned out it was a little bit of a drizzly day, but it was actually perfect for running. And I know the next, the next race that they're promoting is the Turkey Trial, which is November eighth. And I'd encourage the residents to come out. That's a good, it's a five-mile run, it's a very challenging course. I would ask that the community participate in that as well. Planning commission met, and the last meeting, there was a couple items on the agenda, actually three items on the agenda. One was the final site plan approval for FedEx. We had, actually, we, the planning commission had approved a final site plan based on several redesigns of, of what they were going to do in terms of their truck access and their van access in and out of that facility onto eighty-two and the ability to, to push those vehicles away from eighty-two. And planning commission approved a final site plan with the engineer, and it went back to FedEx, and FedEx denied it. So, they came back to planning commission and asked for reconsideration of their original site plan, and it failed from a vote, you know, of two to, two to three. So, I think the biggest concerns they had regarding that, we're trying to work still with FedEx. We hope that things do work out, but they basically wanted to have one entrance in and out that basically pushed all of their vehicle traffic onto eighty-two, which, which planning commission was opposed to. So, FedEx is kind of still in the works with planning commission. I'll provide an update once we see them back again. There was a final site plan approval for the Cornerstone. There was a sub lot three, which they're proposing a, it's kind of a multi-tenant purpose building where they can, you know, I guess, market to different businesses and can partition off a size of a building that could bring in a variety of different businesses into the lot that they want to construct. So, there was a final site plan approval for that. And then there was another item on the agenda for some micro towers around Twinsburg. Now, these micro towers are, from what I understand, a increase in the technology infrastructure of the city through fiber optics. However, what was being proposed was going to be put in our right-of-way in various points in the city, and the company that's wanting to install it came to planning commission with a basically wooden telephone pole with a big box attached to it that would go at a lot of our main intersections. And myself, as well as other members of planning commission, didn't feel like that was appropriate. This was a preliminary site plan approval, so, or preliminary review, so we were able to give them a lot of feedback and said, "We support the advancement of technology, but try to come to something that, you know, either put it on existing poles or maybe bring in a streetlight type situation that can kind of mask the utility function of just sticking other poles up around our city." So, we're anticipating that that's going to come back, hopefully, with something better than what was proposed before. Next, planning commission meeting is on October sixth, and that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Mr. Roden?
The environmental commission met. I was not able to be there, so Mr. McDermott will actually be speaking on that today, and I know the report.
Thank you. Mr. Scafidi?
Thank you, good evening. The border zoning appeals will meet tomorrow evening here at City Hall at six-thirty. And one other thing I have under my report says the liaison to the Chamber of Commerce, they will be having their third annual clam bake down in the square. That will be on October sixteenth from five to eight o'clock. It's a, it's a really nice clam bake. I've attended it in the past. The clam bake itself is twenty dollars. If you don't like clams, you can just have a chicken bake for fifteen, or kids' meals are five dollars, and then there's sides and so on and so forth. There's plenty to do down there, not just clam bake. They're, they're having live music, a petting zoo, a hay maze, I keep saying haze maze. It's a hay maze, face painting, hay rides, pumpkins, beer, wine tent, delicious food and more. So, and it's open for everyone of all ages. They need your orders by the tenth of October, and you can go on twinsburgchamber.com to make your reservations and to register for the clam bake. So, again, it's a nice affair, it's something that, it's a nice fall event, it's down in the square, it's outside. So, if you're at all interested, please go on twinsburgchamber.com and sign up for the clam bake. Other than that, my committees have not met, so I, that's the end of my report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. The safety committee did not meet. Community relations will be meeting this Thursday at the chamber house at five-thirty, and public work, public work has not met. Mr. Fury?
Thank you. The redistricting committee met on nine-eleven for a final approval of the slight changes that are being proposed to rebalance the five wards of the city of Twinsburg in compliance with our charter. They have approved a map. Mr. Maestros will be drawing up some, some written legislation along with a map for us to, to approve, but there were just a couple slight changes in wards one and two, and it's okay, Sam. Not slight, slight, Sam. Slight. You, you picked up, you didn't lose.
It's more work, see, Bob? I get all the work.
I'm Bill, he's Bob. Anyway.
That's Bob's word, too.
I didn't vote on that, Sam, I just watched. Okay, I just, I just facilitated, not, not input. So, that will be actually the, that will conclude the work of the redistricting committee, and they'll be eligible for other committees this January when we do interviews. Secondly, I would like to bring to your attention that there was a mistake with our gas program. Many of you received a letter that referred to a black box on the top that said Stark County. We know we're not in Stark County, and the price was higher, because we got a better deal than them. They pretty much come the same day. The Twinsburg letter is, has a piece on the bottom. If you get this letter, you're already in the program, you don't need to do anything. Your rate will be four dollars and thirty-one cents per MCF, which again is thirty-five cents less than the, the nice people in Canton. If you do not want to stay in the program, you can look at other options on the PUCO website. The website is listed on this form as well, and you simply have to send in this card to opt out of our program. But again, right now, it's the best price on the website, and, you know, independent consultants did a, a good job of striking a price again this year. If there's any confusion, please contact me or City Hall, and we can make sure that everything works out. The phone numbers are identical, it doesn't matter. If you want to talk to somebody, the eight-hundred number on either letter is the same.
So, how, what do you do if you want to get into the program?
If you wanted to get into the program, you would call one-eight-hundred-two-eight-zero-four-four-seven-four, and simply, they'll give you, you give them their address, and they will sign you up. So, and I think right now, we have forty-one hundred and eighty households in the city of Twinsburg are members of this program. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Sorese?
Thank you. The finance committee will meet next Tuesday, the thirtieth, at five-thirty here in the council chambers, and the following day, on October first, the Twins Day Committee will meet at seven-thirty at the Twins Days office. We also have coming up, a capital improvements board will be meeting, and, Mrs. Stoffer, we need to schedule another safety committee meeting soon. Get an update on where we left off last time.
That sounds good.
So, we'll get together and get a date set for that. I also wanted to mention that I attended a, a meeting this afternoon with representatives from our park and rec department, our service department, and the Twinsburg Boys League, and we were basically discussing finalizing the grant that we received, thanks to Daisy Walker and the environmental commission for obtaining this grant from the Cleveland Indians. And we're trying to finalize the work that's being done on our ball fields in the city so we can get the paperwork into the Indians and get that completed, that whole process completed, and hopefully get on the list for another grant next year. So, we, we made a lot of progress. We met because it came, it became public that some of the members of the Boys League weren't sure of what was going on with the city's end of repairing the fields and upgrading some of the ball fields. So, we had a good meeting, very productive, and we thought that we can go forward successfully from here and work together to improve what's already a great establishment with our Boys League and a good partnership with the city. Also, during that meeting, I found out that... Also, during that meeting, I found out that our nine-U baseball team has been featured in a national publication called Baseball Magazine. And it was quite an extensive story with pictures, not only a team picture, but pictures of all the players. And the story was about the success of this program and the individual kids, and it was really well done in a full-color magazine. I don't know who gets that magazine. I guess the coaches and umpires and so forth from the little leagues get that publication, but I did get to see it and look through it. It was very well done and a really nice article and a big plus for Twinsburg. So I wanted to congratulate them on receiving that notoriety. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. McDermott?
Yes. See, I had the opportunity to sit in on the Environmental Commission meeting on the eleventh of September, and I'll just give you a few highlights. The first item was that I administered the oath of office to Hallie Shaw, the team rep. And along the lines of other interesting things, Lynn Mustard discussed, the mutter discussed the possibility of the city holding an E-Waste Drive this fall. Daisy Walker reported that Robert Merrenberger had resigned from the Environmental Commission effective September first. He will be missed. And that's just about it for that. Next is the Architectural Review Board meeting of the eighteenth. There were six cases. First two were ninety thirty-six, Church Street ramp by the owner and illuminated planner, and were approved as noted. Next item was a new house on one-sixty-five Mather Way, and it was approved as submitted. Next was a Meadowwood single-family dwelling. That was Polte Home, and it was approved as noted. And along that line, of interest, twenty-two of the ninety-five permits have already been issued in the Corbett Farm area. Next is eighteen-sixty Summit Commerce Parkway, fast signs, and were approved as submitted. And the last but not least is ninety-seventy-nine Darryl Road, non-eliminating wall sign was approved as noted. And that's it for the report.
Well, thank you. The mayor is not here, so there will not be a mayor's report tonight. Any department heads want to speak?
Karen. Larry does.
Oh, Larry does. Collette and Karen.
Thank you, Council. I'll be brief, just a couple of things. It's been a really busy week here or so for the Department of Community Development. We have three companies who are currently seeking to relocate to Twinsburg. I'll be coming to council with two Twinsburg occupancy program agreements at the next council meeting, maybe three if the other one is ready to sign by that time. We've also had a busy week with Amy and getting qualifications and proposals in for a number of things. We're doing a central area road network assessment study. We've received a number of qualifications from engineering, traffic engineering firms for that. We also received a proposals for the widening of State Route ninety-one from the square to Tinkers Creek for a three-lane roadway cross-section there. And then we also have a qualification submittal that we received on last Friday from a number of companies for water supply supplementation or enhancement for the irrigation system for the golf course. So all three of those things will then be reviewed this coming week by a review staff, and then we'll be making a selection and coming back to council for further action on those particular issues and contracts. Primarily tonight, I wanted to give a sound congratulations to Twinsburg Company Loudon Properties. Loudon Properties was recently admitted into the very exclusive INC. five-hundred club of the fastest-growing companies in America. Loudon Properties, they're headquartered here in Twinsburg. It's basically a relatively young startup company. They provide mortgage field services specializing in residential inspections, property preservation, and property management services for banks, investors, property managers, and government housing authorities. That's quite an achievement, but they have also, they're also listed as number one in the Case Western Reserve Weatherhead one-hundred list of fastest-growing companies in northeast Ohio. And they are a four-time winner of the Cascade Capital Growth Award for Revenue Growth and Job Creation. So this is a kind of company that we're proud to have here in the city of Twinsburg, and I just wanted to make council aware that this company's done such a great job and has received so many accolades. And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Larry. Collette?
Good evening, everybody. As you may know, we promoted one of our dispatchers last week to the position of Terminal Agency Coordinator. That was a spot that was vacated by Ronnie Quigley's retirement. So that is the supervisory role, so we now need to add another full-time dispatcher. And the Civil Service has announced a dispatch test will be held on October seventeenth here at our community center. We will begin accepting applications for the test on October sixth. Details and applications are available on our website and will be advertised in local newspapers. Our other full-time opportunities that are currently available is that we need an operator at our wastewater treatment plant and a full-time lifeguard at the fitness center. And both of those are bargaining unit positions. They are advertised on our website, and you can find more details on mytwinsburg.com. The Civil Service Commission met on September eleventh. A police entrance exam was discussed for later this year. In recent years, we've tested using Tri-C's facilities for the exam, but the chief would now like to investigate other options, including perhaps going back to conducting our own tests as we have done in the past. This is kind of all in conjunction with stepping up our police recruiting efforts in order to attract a larger pool of qualified candidates from the area. The department plans to attend job fairs, advertise in a wider array of publications, and may even create a department video. These efforts are being advanced by Assistant Chief Goncheski and a small team he's put together for police recruiting. HR note, I've been in discussions with a couple of different providers for setting up an e-doc program for hiring our seasonal staff next spring. As you know, we hire about a hundred and fifty seasonal employees each year, all of whom are required to complete various documents and sign releases and acknowledgements. And this could be done using electronic documentation. They'll be able to submit the documents electronically. We'll be able to store them, and this will save electronically, and then we'll be able to save money on compiling, a lot of money on mailing, and just a lot of follow-up little stuff like that if it could all be done electronically. So that's pretty exciting, and I'll be trying to confirm something for that, on that before too much longer.
Is that a service that you purchase?
That would be a service, yes. Yeah. Hopefully, we're hoping to offset that. It's actually quite expensive, the postage that we spend every year on sending out all those documents. And then the kids bring them back, and then they don't have some of the things, and we have to follow up with them and mail other stuff out and that kind of thing. So we're hoping electronically, everybody's just going to be able to sign off electronically. We'll be able to have those documents submitted and then just store them right in electronic files.
We can, people can apply online now. Is that right?
They can apply online, yes. Yeah. The application can be submitted online. That's as far as we're.
That's as far as it can go. Okay.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Collette. Karen?
Hi.
Hi.
I received notification from the Auditorate State's Office indicating that for the audit year two thousand fourteen, and for two thousand fourteen on, the city will be part of the bid process. So the state auditors will not be conducting the audit for two thousand fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. It's a five-year bid for independent auditors. They conduct the bid process, and then we are able to select two additional auditors to be part of the pool. And one of the things that they are doing differently is that they call it a grouping or pooling, and that they put the bid out for two or more entities that they believe are similar in size, et cetera. And who they are pulling us with is the city of North Canton. And so what will happen is that they go out for bid, and whoever they, whoever is ultimately is selected to conduct our audit will be the same for the city of North Canton. It's a grading system, et cetera. It has to go through that process. And again, the audit will be conducted for a five-year period. So just letting you know that we did receive notification, and the reason why it's no longer going to be conducted by the state auditor's office is because of staffing and just, they don't have enough staffing to conduct an audit in that manner. So that deadline to complete the form as required by them is September twenty-fifth. Also, I'm working on the continuing disclosure statement. As you know, that is what the investors read about the city of Twinsburg. However, even though we have not had any activity as far as bonds, that sort of thing, we still are going to complete a continued disclosure statement. There's not, or our vice code mandating it, but this is what the investors like to see, and this also additionally helps any type of bond ratings agencies to review how the city is doing financially and our solvency. So that's what I'm working on now. The deadline to have that submitted will be, is September thirtieth. So that's the bond agency that is handling that is Voyeurs, and we've been with them for a while. Also, as you know, we sent out a schedule timeline for our Finance Committee hearing as well as our capital improvement schedule, and it has been amended as of today based on the council meetings, when they're going to be held. So I will be sending a revision based on the dates that we've put in for today. Lastly, we received our local income tax distribution for September, and we received one point, one million three hundred forty-eight thousand eight oh nine compared to last year's receipts of one million five hundred thirty-three thousand six seventy-six. This does reflect a twelve percent decrease. Refunds and adjustments in the amount of eighty-two thousand three twenty-six are also reflective in the September distribution. Total year-to-date collections, seventeen million nine seventy-eight nine eighty compared to last year, nineteen million four seventy-five two sixty-five. This also reflects a decrease of seven point six eight percent. The net cash distribution applied to the quarter percent reduction change is a hundred sixty thousand six ninety-three. And just to let you know, since we do have the Finance Committee meetings that are coming up applicable to the budget, there have been, I've asked the department heads to prepare narratives to further expound on what their requirements are, what they're asking for. I just, I was supposed to release them, I believe, Monday, and the reason why I held up is because I'd like the mayor to review them, you know, in case she would like more included in their narratives. And when she comes back, she'll review them, and then I will release them. Are there any questions?
Yeah, I have a question, Karen. In talking about the bond rating and that stuff, how does it affect us? We are fortunate enough that our community passed the income tax increase for those four years, and now we removed it. How does that affect when they see that we're bringing in less? Does it have any effect, or do they understand what we did?
They do understand it. We were at an advantage for bond ratings when we did build up our reserve, obviously. And we built up our reserves by five million dollars almost per year. It could have a negative effect if we don't continue to have stabilized balances, but we are proactive in that. In fact, we are having a Finance Committee meeting to address just that subject, to ensure that that condition does not happen, just as the county was stating, that indeed it does affect when they look at the overall picture of, do they have a reserve to indicate stability, et cetera? That is a major weight, and the advantages of having a good bond rating, obviously, is for if and ever we decide to go out for some kind of debt, we get a better interest rate. So there are benefits to that, but I assure you that we will definitely, with this progressive council, mayor, continue to make sure that we are solvent, and then we have an action plan as to what the levels of our reserves are we comfortable with before, like, down the road, future action would be needed.
Thank you. Thanks, Karen.
So that's a good question. Any other questions?
No, thank you.
That's all I have to report.
Okay. Thank you, Karen. Next, we're going to move on to legislation. So we will begin with Ordinance ninety-two thousand fourteen. Shannon?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the proposal submitted by Prospectus Architecture to provide architectural and engineering services related to potential new clubhouse for Gleneagle's Golf Course.
Okay, this is the third and final reading. So I'd like to make a motion to adopt Ordinance ninety-two thousand fourteen. Is there a second?
A second. Yield.
I'll yield the bill.
Okay, I made the motion. It was seconded by Mr. Fury. Larry, would you like to come up and tell a little bit about this?
Good evening. Ordinance ninety-two thousand fourteen authorizes the mayor to enter into an agreement with Prospectus Architecture to provide architecture and engineering services related to the potential new clubhouse for the Gleneagle's Golf Course. Went through a long selection process, which included qualifications, interviews, and selected Prospectus to provide the services to help us program and get an idea of what the cost might be, should we continue to move forward with a clubhouse for the golf course.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other discussion? Okay, Shannon, please call the roll.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Ordinance ninety-two thousand fourteen passes by a seven-zero vote. Next, we have Ordinance ninety-nine-two thousand fourteen. Shannon?
An ordinance amending the current year appropriations for the special revenue account as established in Ordinance nineteen-two thousand fourteen, the appropriation ordinance for the city of Twinsburg for the year two thousand fourteen and declaring an emergency.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules on Ordinance ninety-nine-two thousand fourteen and place it on its third and final reading and declare it an emergency. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I made the motion. It was seconded by Mr. Sorese. Karen, would you like to?
Yes. Again, this is for emergency repair to the netting that separates the basketball courts. They did have someone out to inspect it, and they indicated that is literally like hanging there, and at any point it could fall down. So for safety purposes, this is why this is presented to council for passage.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
No, this was discussed at our last council meeting, and we basically instructed Derek to go take care of the safety issues as soon as possible.
Hey, Shannon, please call the roll.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Okay, emergency clause passes, seven-zero. Now I'd like to make a motion to adopt Ordinance ninety-nine-two thousand fourteen as an emergency. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I made the motion. It was seconded by Mr. Yates. Any more discussion? Shannon, please call the roll.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Ordinance ninety-nine-two thousand fourteen passes by a seven-zero vote. Next, we have Ordinance one-hundred-two thousand fourteen.
An ordinance amending the current year appropriations for the general revenue account as established in Ordinance nineteen-two thousand fourteen, the appropriation ordinance for the city of Twinsburg for the year two thousand fourteen.
Okay, this is its first reading. Now we have Resolution one-hundred-one-two thousand fourteen. Shannon?
A resolution accepting the amount and rate as determined by the Summit County Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county fiscal. fiscal officer and declaring an emergency.
I think we decided not to do this on emergency, right?
No, because we, we do have enough time to do so. Uh, that's why, uh, Shannon and, uh, Dave Maslow was gracious enough to add it on because the day that she had completed the agenda is actually when I received it.
Okay.
Um, but again, this is the standard practice of, which is required by the Ohio Revised Code, that we adopt the, any type of levies that we have applicable to the city of Twinsburg. In this case, it's police fire in the park debt.
Okay. So, let's see. Pardon me? This one, I just, oh, I just need to make a motion now to adopt? Pardon? Resolution one oh one-two thousand fourteen?
Right.
As a non-emergency? Okay, I'll make the, I made the motion. It was, it was, um, seconded by Mr. Fury. Shannon, please call the roll.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Ceracey?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Okay, now, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution one hun, oh, I'm sorry. As amended, I'm sorry. Okay, I apologize. Uh, next, we have resolution. Oh, I'm sorry. Did I say, uh, resolu, or, did I say resolution? I am done. Okay, thank you.
We're next.
Resolution, it's a late night. This is, uh, resolution one oh two-two thousand fourteen. Shannon?
A resolution expressing support for the county of Summit proposed twenty-five, point twenty-five percent additional sales tax and urging the citizens of Twinsburg to vote yes on the issue at the November fourth-two thousand fourteen general election.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution one hundred-two-two thousand fourteen. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I made the motion. It was seconded by Mr. Scafidi. Um, any discussion?
Yeah, we had a presentation earlier by Mr. Costandaris, uh, the county councilman, as well as somebody from the sheriff's office, and, um, issue twelve, ninety-two point five percent of that is going to go to safety. Um, they assure us that, um, that's where it's going, and it's not going to be used for anything else. Um, Summit County has one of the lowest, um, sales tax rates around, and I'm really not sure when the last time that, that, uh, tax has been raised. I, I think it's been some time, but, uh, I think in the matter of safety that I would like to support this tonight. And, uh, ultimately, it's going to be up to the voters of Summit County whether it passes or not. My opinion is that, uh, I would like to just, uh, I would like to support it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Respectfully, I, uh, also heard that discussion earlier this evening, and, uh, right now, the Summit County, uh, budget is almost a half a billion dollars a year. Um, we have all had cuts and, and reorganized our money, and, but in this economy, I don't, I don't think that it's prudent to raise taxes of any kind. So, I'll be voting no on this this evening.
I just want to make it clear that we are not raising the tax, in case, I don't want that to be confused with any other comments you hear. It's not up to us to raise the tax. It'll be up to, the voters of the county will make that change. It's whether we support that, that change or not, and I am in support of that, but, uh, we are not raising the taxes tonight by any.
I, I understand.
Yeah, we don't raise. So, I just, yeah, I need to make that clear. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Nope.
Hey, Shannon, please call the roll.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
No.
Mr. McDermott?
No.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Ceracey?
Yes.
Okay, resolution one hu, one oh two, one hundred-two-two thousand fourteen passes by a five-two vote. Next, we have resolution one hundred-three-two thousand fourteen. Shannon?
A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an, an amendment to the agreement of the cooper, of cooperation with the Summit County for the Community Development Block Grant Program.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution one hun, one hundred-three-two thousand fourteen. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I made the motion. It was seconded by Mr. Ceracey. Uh, Mr. Finch, would you like to speak on this?
Thank you. Um, every three years, the Department of Housing and Urban Development requires that all urban counties participating, anticipating in the Community Development Block Grant Program, um, reauthorize, basically reauthorize their, uh, and requalify their, their counties to take advantage of being eligible for the HUD Community Development Block Grant Fund monies. Um, we have participated with Summit County in this effort since nineteen ninety-three. Uh, every three years, there are some additional amendments and modifications that go along with the program. Uh, they basically clarify that the city must comply with HUD, uh, regulations and be conforming with things like equal opportunity, fair housing, and a number of other, um, HUD-related qualifications and requirements. Uh, that is what's before us tonight and what's embodied in this particular piece of legislation.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion? Shannon, please call the roll.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Ceracey?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Okay, resolution one oh three-two thousand fourteen passes by a seven-zero vote. The next resolution, one oh four-two thousand fourteen, we've decided to pass over for tonight? So, next, then we will have resolution one hundred-five-two thousand fourteen. Shannon?
A resolution appointing one member to the Capital Improvement Board and declaring an emergency.
Okay, this time, I'd like to make an emotion, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules on or, on resolution one oh five-two thousand fourteen and place it on its third and final reading and declared an emergency. Am I reading this correctly? Okay, thank you. Help me out here.
I make a motion, that I, uh, I make a motion that we pass resolution one oh five-two thousand and fourteen. Is there a second?
I'll make the motion. I mean, I'll second.
Okay. I would like, under discussion, I would like to make an amendment to this, um, resolution. The purpose of the resolution is to appoint, uh, an applicant to the Ward Ford, uh, Capital Improvement Board that needs to meet very soon to discuss next year's budget. Before the meeting, we interviewed Allison Doyle. So, at this time, I'd like to make, um, an amendment to resolution one oh five-two thousand fourteen to add Allison Doyle's name under the recipient in second one, in section one. Can I have a second on the, the amendment?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Shannon?
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Ceracey?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, we need, now we need to vote again on the amended resolution, on the adoption of resolution one oh five-two thousand fourteen. Shannon, please call the roll.
On that motion, who's making, who's making it and who's?
We're, we're actually voting on the resolution. We've, we've amended it, and now we're voting on the amended version of resolution one oh five-two thousand and fourteen.
We need to vote on the emergency, though, still?
No, because it's a resolution, and the emergency doesn't need to be suspended.
For this one, I thought we, I'm just clarifying, because they meet before the ten days.
Okay, we, we, we have it under emergency.
Okay.
But we didn't need to suspend the rules and put it on third and final reading, because resolutions only need one reading to go onto an emergency.
By, by declaring it an emergency, just in the body of it, it just, it waives that, that waiting period.
Okay. I getcha. Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Ceracey?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Okay, resolution one oh five-two thousand fourteen passes by a seven-zero vote. Apologize, Shannon, for doing that to you.
It's okay.
Okay. Uh, that's the end of our legislation. Uh, we're moving on to unfinished business, new business, and miscellaneous. Uh, Mr. McDermott, do you have anything?
I have nothing.
You have nothing, okay. Mr. Ceracey?
Nothing, thank you.
Nothing. Mr. Fury?
In our caucus meeting several hours ago, we discussed, uh, was several hours ago. In our caucus meeting, we discussed a proposed change order for the golf course renovation. And, uh, the city engineers asked that I make a motion to, uh...
Approve the change order.
To approve the change order, uh, for the restoration of whole number fund referred to the document of September twenty-third-two thousand four. May I have a second?
In the amount of?
Thirty-two thousand dollars, which is money that is allocated to the project, but not for this specific purpose.
I just thought we should put it in motion.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll second.